All right, it's seven o'clock. Go ahead and call this meeting of the ZBOA into order. We do have a quorum of five of us up here, so we're good there. Notice is hereby given of a Friendswood zoning board of adjustment regular meeting to be held at 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. Friendswood City Hall Council Chambers regarding the items of business according to the agenda listed below. Communications from the public. We've got a public hearing on the five-foot front yard variance request. And I will do consideration and possible action there. Then there's a public hearing for the five-foot side yard variance request. And then we'll receive oral comments and written, any written request along there. And then we'll have consideration and possible actions, approval amendments and staff things. So, we're here. Let me bring things, the plaintiffs, I'm not sure who they are. I shouldn't even, plaintiff isn't even the correct word, the citizen. All right. Not asking you to come up just yet, but just gonna give you a little rundown how this runs. We'll listen to the city and give their point. Then you'll have the, you or your representative will, will make your point or your case. And we'll ask for public comments. And then we will, after public comments close, then we will look around with us and discuss it and discuss back and forth on this. And by, by law, we have to have a supermajority to approve it, so that means four out of the five of us have to approve it. And if you don't like the outcome, the, the alternative is to file a lawsuit. And I believe there is, Mary Kay, there is the option to bring it up again before us? Or is it go straight to the lawsuit?
Ten days.
Straight to the lawsuit, okay. So, this is a quasi judicial proceeding. So, I will have to ask you to, before you speak, to stand up and raise your right hand and, and be sworn in that you're gonna tell the truth in that there. So, let's, let's go ahead and get started.
Excuse me, do anyone that speaks have to take an oath?
Any.
Anyone that's going to speak have to record to take an oath?
Anyone that's going to be speaking. Mary Kay, is it just the client, the?
Anybody who's gonna give testimony would be sworn in. If somebody is coming up for public comment and just wants to express their opinion, they don't have to be. But if they're going to be presenting a case or testifying for either side, as far as the facts, they will need to be sworn in.
All right, so either side needs to be sworn in, public comments not. All right, at this time.
Go ahead and swear now.
Let's go ahead and swear in, sir. You'll stand and Brian and Becky and if, let's see. If you intend to speak before the board tonight, please stand and raise your right hand for your oath. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, in your testimony before this board this evening? All right, thank you. Okay. Becky, I believe you're up.
We need to do communications from the public first?
Oh, okay.
For just general comments?
If anybody has anything to say to ZBOA communications, please come forward and, and speak. You, you will have, in the public hearing, you will have a chance to speak for or against this. First is just the open comment now. Okay, seeing there's no one here, Becky.
Do you wanna go ahead and announce the, the agenda item as far as what is going to be considered first?
Okay, we'll do that. The public hearing, five-yard front yard variance request to receive comments, both oral and written, regarding a request for a variance of five feet from the required 25-foot front yard setback on the property located at 212 East Heritage Drive, being part of Lot 1, Block 2, Friendswood subdivision, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas. Okay, now I think you're up, Becky, for Brian, either one.
Excuse, are we considering these one at a time or both?
They are itemized separately. There's gonna be a public hearing for the five-foot front yard setback.
And then this, okay, thank you.
And then we'll move to the next agenda item.
Independent variance.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen. This, we've been working on this particular parcel since Harvey. This is a flood victim. The, the owner of the parcel has had an opportunity to have a new home built through a GLL grant. So, dealing with the contractor, back and forth, trying to get the permitting set up, we had a lot of communication back and forth, trying to figure out how to best utilize this parcel. When the permit application came in, we found that the parcel had never been platted. And it, by law, we, we have to plat prior to issuing a permit. So, in the plating process, we do have an opportunity to correct some sins of the past. We, we've got a road that isn't where it's in the, its right-of-way boundaries. So, in the plating process, part of that parcel will be dedicated to give us what we already have, which is that East Heritage Drive. Part of the problem with that is where the house sits currently and how the lot is arranged, it becomes very difficult to meet the current 25-yard front setback. This parcel has some additional concerns because it is on the high bank of the creek and it falls off relatively quickly and falls into the regulatory floodway and AEs. And in order, in an effort for the, the homeowner to minimize impact, they're trying to utilize some of the existing pad and concrete footprint that is there. And that seems to be the best location and probably the only location on this parcel that is viable for construction. Unfortunately, all those kind of impact the front build line. And I was unable to approve a permit based on the setbacks that are gonna be required.
All right. Joe, does P&amp;Z have any input on the plating process of this or?
I'll defer that to Becky, your honor.
Okay. All right, so at this time, applicant, you come up. And I read it, but I don't remember your name, so if you'll please give us your name.
Sure. My name is Kevin Jenkins, I work with Friendswood Construction.
Wait till he gets up to the microphone.
Assistant in the general land office with the homeowner assistance program. And this is one.
So you're representing the homeowner or you are the homeowner?
No, I'm, I'm not the homeowner, I'm the contractor.
Okay.
The homeowner's Jennifer Sanders. She basically has a, a small baby and couldn't be here tonight, so she asked that I attend on her behalf.
All right.
So she's eligible for the program, which our program is designed to help low to moderate income families that were, had received damage from Hurricane Harvey. So she was eligible for this program. So, basically, the lot that it sits on is, is a difficult one, complex one with, for us, with the floodway, the easement from the creek. You know, obviously, as the gentleman described, we tried to submit the permit application and it was, you know, denied basically to go through the replating process, which we're currently doing. And based off that replat is why we're requesting the variance because given that we only have a certain option of floor plans to build under the program. We're actually doing one that's somewhat unique for this one. But with, with the build plan that we're going with is, you know, we're trying to get as far, far away from the floodway as possible, as well as trying to keep that, the concrete pad that's already there, that's keeping kind of the structural integrity of that slope in place to prevent erosion down, down the road. So, that's why we're requesting the variance on the front. Because if you're looking at the site plan, you can see that line that's closest to the back corner. I mean, that's the floodway. And that we're basically trying to push it as far up as we possibly can to kind of keep it out of the floodway, so.
Okay, are you, are you enlarging the slab or are you just using?
This is actually gonna go on piling, so that slab's already in place. We're, we're not gonna do anything with it. There's a little bit of demolition where the house sits right now, where the pilings are gonna have to go, that we'll have to take out some of that slab. It actually comes down a little bit and forms a little bit of a U. But that's the only piece of the slab that we, we would like to have to pull out in order to put the pilings in place. The home's gonna be elevated about 10 feet off the ground on piling.
Oh, okay. Okay. Do y'all have any questions?
Generally, we'll ask questions later.
Okay, so the gentleman has stated his position. Now we'll ask for public comments for or against. Anyone here to speak either way? Okay.
Good evening, I'm Edwin Benson. I grew up in that neighborhood at 304, or 305 North Shadow Bend. I currently own 304 South Shadow Bend and have also a partner in 213 East Heritage. This property has been there for years. It's been in a floodway. I think an improvement of what they're looking at would be fantastic for the neighborhood. As a person growing up in that area, we need to do this. It is a beautiful location on the water. And you don't have many of those in Friendswood currently. I think we need to give these guys their variance, and I'll just speak for both sides, for both the front and the sides variance. Questions I can answer for you.
Guys, any questions?
We don't. Generally, again, we reserve questions for later.
Okay.
Questions come later.
All right, thank you.
You need to ask it two more times. You need to ask the question two more times and close it.
Okay. So, is there anyone else that would like to speak publicly for or against? Okay, going once, going twice. We'll close public comments for the five-foot front yard variance request, public hearing. And at this time, then, we discuss now?
We can ask questions. I'd like to ask Kevin, is this, looks like steps coming up there. Is that steps going up to this five-foot?
Can you wait till you get to the microphone before you make comment, please?
Right, okay, now.
Steps in the front and the rear, but typically for these types of homes, we're supposed to have ADA assessable. But for this one, we're gonna do a, a lift in place of a ramp because a ramp wouldn't fit and it would intrude into the floodway. So, there will be steps entering the house on the front and on the back.
Does that lead into the building or to?
A porch.
A porch, so the actual building, the living part of the building will be behind the required setback?
For the most part, yes, sir. The porch will be encroaching into, the porch will be encroaching into the variance that we're requesting.
Can I, can I just ask the chairman to go ahead and read item four, consideration and possible action, and then continue discussion?
All right. Consideration and possible action on the five-foot front yard variance request. Consideration and possible action regarding a request for a variance of five feet from the required 25-foot front yard setback on the property located at 212 East Heritage Drive, being part of Lot 1, Block 2, Friendswood subdivision, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas. All right. Go ahead, Ron.
Yes, I had a question. I, I wanted to be sure again, so you're saying the steps will or will not be involved in the, this five-foot setback will or will not be involved in living quarters? That was one question. And you said that you wanted to use as much of the current slab. You referred to the current slab or foundation. This is a mobile home.
No, it won't be.
There is a mobile, that is a mobile home there currently, correct?
Correct.
What kind of slab is this thing on?
It's basically a slab, it's not actually the slab to the house, but more or less a slab on the perimeter of the house for the porch.
So, the slab that you're saying that the, there is no, there is no current real foundation, is that correct?
Correct. It's a, it's basically on kind of pier, pier and beam. It's on cinder blocks.
It's on cinder blocks, there is no foundation?
Correct, so I'll, I'll let you finish your question. We're not, the, the slab that we're keeping there is not gonna be any part of the structural integrity of the foundation for the home that we're building.
So, the, the portion of foundation, rather, the portion of concrete that's been laid out that you're keeping, you're talking about the entrance driveway and the, the concrete that's been laid out to go up to the steps? Is that correct? Is that what you're keeping?
No, sir, it's more on the backside and around. It's kind of like a patio that overlooks the creek almost in the backyard instead of being a wooden porch.
But nothing structural having to do with construction of the house?
No, sir.
Okay, so the, it, this truly is a mobile home. There is no real foundation under it. And so, when, when you referred to trying to save a foundation, cause I had a look, this is a mobile home with lattice work all around it, that's really what it is. And so, there is no real foundation under this. And so, when, when, the structure that you're building, what kind of structure?
The mobile home is being removed totally.
Sir?
The mobile home is being removed.
Oh, obviously, I mean, I'm, I'm sure the mobile home, yeah. The mobile home is gone. Yeah, but, but he kept referring to what, there was a foundation they were trying to save and there really isn't a foundation there.
I misspoke if I said foundation, I thought, I just said, I thought I said slab, just a structural slab.
Okay, so there's really nothing under that trailer. The, can I ask what kind of home or structure are we talking about? And what sort of elevation are we talking about?
It's gonna be on pilings, wooden pilings, and it's gonna be 10 feet off the ground.
Oh, okay, so this is, well, for lack, I'm sorry, just out of my mind for a better description, we're talking type of a beach house? I mean, it's elevated, there will be piers and it'll be elevated 10 feet above ground level?
Yeah, flood zone there.
The foundation, I mean, the, the first floor will be 10 feet above?
Correct, off the lowest adjacent grade, so.
Well, okay, and a single, single-story dwelling or?
It'll be a two-story house.
Two-story dwelling, so, okay, okay. Okay, so, I wanted to get a concept in my mind, what we're talking about. Now, and we're talking about the five feet in front. There's a huge tree there, right on the street. And in fact, there's two of them. Are, are, I'm just curious, are they gonna try to maintain those during, can, will those be left there for, after construction or?
We're trying, try our best to keep the trees there, so.
Okay.
All right.
Part of that right-of-way will be part of the city's property with the new plaque.
Of course it will, yeah, that's part of the, those trees are in, currently in what would be called the setback.
Correct.
Yeah, and so, I just wondered what your position was about that.
Yeah, the homeowner wants to keep them too, so we're gonna do our best to try to keep them.
So, and they're gonna try to keep the driveway that's currently there?
That would be our plan, given that we don't wanna disrupt the trees.
Good luck on, okay. And you said there was some concrete in the back, which is more or less a patio?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, and then I presume that they'll put concrete under the house?
No.
No?
No, sir.
So, it would not be concrete under the house?
No, sir.
But at 10 feet up, okay.
Let me ask you a question from the presentation that y'all sent out. It looked like that they were gonna have to cede the city a chunk that is presently the, the street?
Yes, sir.
So they're gonna be giving us property?
Yes, sir, so their existing property line, if they were to keep it, they would probably, they would be able to meet the, the setback as is, but because they have to dedicate right-of-way to the city to accommodate that road where it's at, it's gonna eat into their front yard.
Okay.
And they can't push the house back because then it pushes it into the floodway.
Okay, good, thank you.
I'm sorry, Becky, why, why is it they can't move back because?
Because if they move the house further to the rear, if they move back to meet the 25 feet, then they're gonna push that structure into the floodway. And we're trying to get it out of the floodway.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
So, Becky or Brian, are we, as a city, we're going to try and maintain the trees even though they're in the, the right, the right-of-way there?
No.
We wouldn't maintain them, but they would be located on city property technically.
Just because they're?
No, the city will not get rid of them. During construction, the, the builder and the homeowner is gonna try and keep them. Whether or not they survive is something different, but.
Yes, okay. So, is, sir, is there any reason that you wanna keep that concrete pad or slab or there in the front?
It's in the rear, and that's just because it's on the slope of the creek, just for erosion purposes. It seems like, why disturb it? It's, it's kind of seems like it's keeping.
So it'll stabilize the ground, what it's gonna be doing, stabilizing that area?
Correct.
One question, is that patio in the floodway or does that have anything, is that of any significance? I mean, if it's behind the house, is it in the floodway or, Brian, does that matter?
No, it doesn't matter because it's existing structure, so it has no effect.
So it's a?
In fact, at this point, if they were to remove it, then we'd require them to do all sorts of engineering to show us that it's not gonna be adversely affected.
Leave things as is.
At this point, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Now, the space you're taking is basically where the mobile home was. So it's actually, could be viewed partially as being grandfather situation. We're just allowing them to build a new house where the old one was.
Yeah, there is, as I gathered, they're just removing the mobile home and going up.
Yeah.
I'm gathering from the drawing, essentially, it's about the size or maybe slightly larger than the mobile home that is currently there. I, I don't have the square footage, but.
It does, it will be roughly the same location and same size, the.
It's, it's difficult to ga, gauge because the mobile home's completely boxed in with heavy lattice. But, but, yeah, it looks about the same.
Right, and they were compliant with the build lines, but because the city is requiring right-of-way, that's what's affecting the setbacks.
Yes, okay. I was just trying to get in my mind, what, he kept talking about a slab and there's no slab under a mobile home, yeah. Now I understand.
Okay, anybody else got any questions? Gentlemen? Okay.
I move that we approve the variance.
I second that motion.
Can I?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Could you, in your motion? In your motion, if you find, it would be best if the motion would say that, that you find that all necessary legal prerequisites have been met.
All right. Okay, do we have a motion?
So move.
So.
Do we, no.
No, we.
Say that all of our requirements have been met.
All of our requirements have been met and.
Mr. Chairman, do you have a copy of the, the script?
Mike, I think your motion would be suitable if you just said it meets all these requirements.
Yes, that sort of is.
I move that we allow the encroachment of the five-foot into the required front yard setback of 25 feet, being a variance to Appendix C, zoning ordinance, section 7.0.2, Regulation Matrix, residential district, and to, the side yard is separate, okay?
And state all legal, necessary legal prerequisites have been met.
And that all necessary?
Legal prerequisites have been met.
Okay, rec.
Complies with all legal requirements.
Whatever she said, I move it.
Necessary prerequisites have been met.
All right.
And I second that motion.
All right, so now we vote on it?
Yes.
So, all, for approval, raise your hand and say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Be it passed five, nothing? So, we move on to the next item, which is the?
Side yard.
Side yard, so, get my paperwork right here, okay, so.
So we just go through the same format again?
Same format again, just the side, we're doing the side yard, so, public hearing and five-yard side variance request. And we'll receive comments on this, at this time.
Read number three, please, 3A, I mean, excuse me, 5A?
5A?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, to receive comments both oral and written regarding a request for a variance of five feet from the required 10-foot side yard setback on the property located at 212 East Heritage Drive, being part of Lot 1, Block 2, Friendswood subdivision, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas. Okay, so, at this point, we, we'll receive comments. Brian?
So, much like on the, the first variance, this is, this is almost, it is identical. It's just where the location of the variance would be for the side setback. Again, where the existing structure is, this is, is, pretty much falls in line. Unfortunately, for, for my requirements, it did not meet the 10-foot side setback. So, in order for them to move forward, we are at your, at your hearing to, to get the variance for the five-foot side setback.
All right. Applicant, do you have anything to say on the, that, if you'd approach the podium?
Yes, sir, it's Brian, right? Just discussed the same thing. We just, in order to position the house over and out of the floodway, we're requesting the, the five-foot variance.
Thank you.
All right. Any public comments for or against? All right, so, this time we'll go consideration and possible actions on the five-foot side yard variance request. A consideration and possible action regarding a request for a variance of the five feet from the required 10-foot side yard setback on the property located at 212 East Heritage Drive, being part of Lot 1, Block 2, Friendswood subdivision, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas. Gentlemen?
I move that.
Well, no, the only thing I would make comment about, and, and I'll ask Brian, isn't there a huge right-of-way?
Yes, 60.
Adjacent to that? I mean, it's, it's like a quarter of a mile, no, it, it has, but I mean, there's like, what, 60, 80 feet?
60-foot drainage has been off to the side there. As far as impact onto a neighbor, it'd be very minimal.
There is no impact, essentially.
What's the difference between a easement and a right-of-way? It's just, has nothing to do with that.
Kind of a semantics thing, cause.
I think that might be semantics, I mean.
A right-of-way is generally city property. A right-of-way is generally city property.
Is generally what, Becky?
Is generally city property.
Okay.
And easement is an overlay on somebody's private property that gives them the ability to use that property.
There is a difference.
So this is public property, it is city property with a 60-foot, or it may be a drainage easement property.
This one, I believe, is a drainage easement.
Okay, so the city property with a drainage easement.
The drainage district owns it, and they have an easement on top of it. And the easement states that the 60-foot is for public use, so it could be a multitude of things.
So we could walk down there and browse around?
You can go play golf on it, David. No, my comment was that I've had the opportunity to look, and there is a huge easement there. So there is, as best I could see, no impact. I mean, the 10-foot issue, if it were in a neighborhood, would be of significance. But here, it just didn't make a difference.
Since this meets all of our legal requirements, I move that we approve it.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion?
I just made the motion.
Motion, okay.
Second motion.
Second, all right.
I think we have to do this again.
I said, since it meets all the legal requirements.
Oh, okay.
Is that sufficient, Mary Kay?
Yes, I think, oops.
Yes, I think that's sufficient.
All right, gentlemen, call for a vote, so all in approval of it, say aye and raise your hand, aye.
Aye.
Passed five-nothing. So, we move to the next agenda item is approval of minutes. Consideration and possible action regarding approval of minutes for the October 22nd, 2019 special meeting.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes as printed.
All right. We vote, so everybody in approval, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, passed five-nothing. Okay, at this point, I believe we've got staff and/or counselor or board liaison reports. Steve, you got anything?
Well, congratulations, Phil, for not only being your first meeting, but being chair of your first meeting. You got through it, good job. Since the last time you all have met, I think we, timing-wise, we were talking about that the council was going to make a change on ZBOA rules to make them a little more flexible for you. That went through two votes and passed. So, if you have it, I don't have it in front of me. Becky can probably get it to you what the changes are. But it was intended to make the rules be more like the state and less restrictive to you guys. And it's a matter of law now, so you're good to go on that.
All right, thank you. Brian or Becky, anything? Mary Kay? Anybody up here? Okay, Joe, you've got anything to say?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. I make a motion that we adjourn?
Second.
Okay, I believe we're all in, probably in agreement, just raise our hands, say yes, and we're adjourned.